I think we got a quorum Travis.
Yep.
Okay, regular meeting the Windsor Heights City Council come to order, roll call.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Eric.
And Susan Skerries.
Here.
Thank you, please join me in a quick pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have been requested to take a ten to fifteen minute recess while we listen to the governor. We will re-adjourn as soon as that's over. I'm sure all of us have got it on TV. Thank you.
So. Yeah.
So.
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 Everybody back?
I'm here.
Okay, well I see pretty much everybody, so I'm assuming we're okay. We'll come back from recess. Next item is approval of the agenda. Motion.
So moved.
Second, someone?
Back in.
Roll call.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones? Joseph Jones? Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public hearing on the site plan for Jake's fireworks that's proposed at 7300 Hickman Road. Motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf or against the proposed site plan for Jake's fireworks? Hearing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Moved.
Back in.
Back.
Roll call.
Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item going along with that is consideration of the site plan, it's in your packet for Jake's fireworks. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Discussion? Any comments or anything on that?
Can we just get an update, so they're gonna stick with the same plan, we're just updating it, or they're just giving us, because they're, they had expired, any idea on when it's going to start?
Actually, they have been pressing me last week and this week to get moving on grading and removing some of the rocks and stuff they have to demo on the property immediately, but we're holding out until tonight's action by the council. It is the same plan as before, it has just expired and they need it to be renewed.
Thanks Dennis, I was just curious on the timing, thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I'm just happy that they're finally coming back again, since I seem to have been a broken record about asking where this was and where we were in the scheme of things with Jake's fireworks, so I'm very happy that now I can cross that off my list of questions.
Okay. Hearing no more, roll call.
Dave, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
What we're approving is accept and conditionally approve the site plan. Is that right?
Yes councillor, this is the same approval that the council did back in April 2019 with the conditions that were listed in the minutes of that meeting, that included staff recommendations on items like the sidewalk width, the the fencing around the trash area, some minor site plan issues that the staff noted that has to be resolved before construction can begin.
Got it, thank you.
We get through that Travis?
No, we haven't.
Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is public forum, which is set aside for comments from the public on items of city business not covered on tonight's meeting. No action will be taken, please state your name and address, keep your comments to five minutes please.
Hi everyone, it's Edie from the Windsor Heights Chamber of Commerce, just wanted to give a quick update slash reminder to everyone about Celebrate Windsor Heights, coming up on Wednesday, the 2nd of December, from 7 to 8pm, it is a virtual event. And on the same day, from 3:30 to 5:30, each ticket that is purchased will receive an opportunity to stop by Hy-Vee in Windsor Heights and receive a charcuterie board, cookies, and a bottle of champagne with each ticket purchased. Does anyone have any questions I may answer?
Sounds good to me Edie.
We are looking forward to it, we will be honoring our Citizen of the Year and our Businesses of the Year throughout the presentation.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions for Edie? Do you have any more comments?
I'm good, have a good night everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was just testing my microphone, it's working.
I can't hear too much of what you're saying, would you repeat please?
Oh, I was just testing if my mic was working.
Yeah it is.
Okay, thank you.
You betcha. Okay, next item is consent agenda, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or changes to it?
Dave, I have a question, please, and that's about the committee assignments. It's it seems like there's one that's different than all the rest, I mean each one has a a council member or representative cited, and then an alternate, except for the MAC has two it says council, it's got
I don't give a if you gotta pick up your kid.
Travis, shatter down. Bombed.
Dave, so it's got two
Yeah, what it is, is the MAC is a combination of two folks, usually it's the mayor and one council person, so it's not identified as an alternate on the, on the document.
Well who was the, who were the members before you changed it?
Ah, I know I was, and I think Mike Jones was.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion on consent agenda? Roll call.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
And I missed someone.
Me.
Joseph Jones.
Next item is new business, consideration of resolution number 2020-122, resolution authorizing the intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement between the Iowa Department of Human Services and the city of Windsor Heights.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of resolution 2020-123, setting the time and place for a public hearing on ordinance 20-09, amending chapter 161 of the Code of Ordinances to update post-construction stormwater management.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the TIF debt certification report. Motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Like, oh, second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the urban renewal report. Motion? To approve.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number seven for College Drive Improvements Project. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we just get an update on where we are with college, considering we're closing in on our date and we haven't started phase four yet?
If you could handle that.
Yeah, they're doing sidewalks, driveways, and grading on phases two and three, we've got quite a bit of good weather here in the next two to three weeks, so we're still optim, I don't know about optimistic, we're still eager to keep moving, but hesitate to pull the plug on the season yet, until we have to, we've got a lot of, a lot of blue skies ahead of us in the next two to three weeks with the forecast we're looking at.
So when will you make that decision? I guess I'm unclear, you said you're hesitant to pull a plug, but we, but we were coming upon a due date, so I'm, I just, I really am just looking for direction on what, what you're gonna do and when you're gonna make that decision.
I guess if you're looking for a drop dead date on when we're gonna pull the plug, I don't know if I can give that to you, but we're, we're still pushing it like we're gonna do phase four this year, and until it's just infeasible that we, we cannot do it, we're encouraging the contractor to keep, keep pushing forward, is that fair to say Justin?
Yes, yep, we'll reevaluate here at the end of the week and see how it goes from there, just looking at the weather. I'd just like to put a caution out there too, with the COVID stuff going around, some of the contractors have had things go on, so that does affect their workforce as well, so we just have to keep that in mind and watch out for that as well.
Teresa and the rest of the council, I have circled the Friday, two weeks from this Friday, as the day we're drop dead gonna make a decision, if we have not made a decision before then, hopefully we'll be able to make enough progress within that time, if we have not, and the weather changes, or we get a curveball of some kind, as Justin started to touch on with the contractor, then we'll be making that decision within that two and a half week period, you'll be the first to know as a council.
I, I just curious, because now would be the point in time when you would start tearing up that street if you were gonna progress, so I just am trying to understand where, where we are, because it doesn't seem as though there's, as I've watched these other phases happen, you would have already started tearing this section up, it, it seems like we're just working on finishing the pieces that are currently in process, that's how it appears at this juncture, so just looking for some direction and honesty in this conversation, thank you.
No, you are absolutely correct, the next pivot point will be when we have to start demolition of the existing roadway, we expect that, that decision to come up within the next week or two, if we see the long-term forecast is gonna go beyond the three weeks that Dalton was talking about, we may make a decision to risk it and move forward, and we're also looking for additional pricing for cold weather concrete work, and if that is an expensive item, then we'll pull the plug faster than if we were gonna try to live out the weather and hope for that.
Very good, thanks for that information.
Any further questions on College Drive improvements? Roll call.
Susan Skerries?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number seven for 2020 Street Improvement Project, Allison and 69th. Motion to approve.
To approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Can we just get an update on the to be, or whatever is the last final section there of the 64th and Allison?
Justin, I'm gonna defer you on that one.
Yep, sorry, I just found the mute button, they started removing today, the pavement, hopefully they get that all removed tomorrow, the driveways, all, most of them that were poured today, so they'll finish, get finished up tomorrow, so hopefully Wednesday those come in for the pipe work and finish that this week, and then turn around and start putting the road back.
So we're looking for a week after this week?
Possibly, I know there's some rain in the forecast for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we'll see how that affects us, but they're pushing as fast as they can, so we're estimating in three weeks, but we're hoping for shorter. we're estimating three weeks, but we're hoping for shorter.
Thanks, Justin.
Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
And Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number seven for the twenty twenty PCC patching project. Motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? It looks good to me.
So this is the
That's good enough.
We had a couple
Teresa, you're correct. That's the patching project. Seventy-third Street was by the bridge and by the Y, so everything on that is completed.
But we're done with all the patching projects that we had for this year, right? That was the last one?
Yes, that was the last one.
All right, thanks, Justin.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Teresa Harms?
Yes.
Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
And Susan Skiris?
Yes.
Next item is council reports or committee updates. Teresa? Do you like to go first?
Yeah, apparently that's the new direction. So public safety will committee meets tomorrow at five thirty, so we have a fun filled packed agenda to move tomorrow, and then pending tonight's action, I started the conversation or communication to transition Sue to get her introduced over to the Metro Waste Authority folks as she transitions into that role on the council. And then Metro Waste meets on Wednesday night, so thank you.
Thank you. Mike Jones?
Communications Committee met this morning and discussed a survey results for the social media as far as where people got their news in the community and whether or not we are going to explore doing a text notification, and it appears that is a direction we are going to move based upon the positive responses that came in from people who who did take the survey, so look for that coming up. I don't know if that'll be the next agenda, Dennis, or maybe maybe the one after that.
And Mike, what was the number that took the survey?
I think it was under a hundred and maybe a hundred, hundred and fifty.
Okay.
That was about right in total, Mike.
The Mike, to answer your question, the purchase for that is about fifty-four hundred dollars a year, so that's within the city administrator's authority to spend without council approval, but we'll look if there is an agreement, if there is a an annual agreement that's required for the service, then it'll become before the council, which I think it is.
Looks like
Which Mike are you talking to, Dennis?
The Mike that asked the question of Dennis about when it's gonna come to the council.
Oh, I didn't ask that, but okay.
Looks like it'll be an interesting program, so I'm looking forward to seeing it being implemented. Mike LaFredo?
I have no report, Dave.
Okay, Joseph?
We had a DART meeting last week to go over the last bit of discussion on the new formula, and one of those things was to talk about when we would implement it, how we would phase it in, and we came to consensus on that. I want to thank Mr. LaFredo for his input and insights, serving on DART with him has been good because we're on the same page, and our community believes in the importance of public transit, and I think we reaffirmed that and our support of how this is gonna go, so we will see, according to this formula, we will see, like I told you, a decrease in property tax for DART for our community. Others will see some other changes over time, but next month, DART will come and visit with us to talk to us about what the formula discussion was and talk about how we're gonna work on our legislative agenda for this upcoming session and focus on other funding sources for transit in the metro, and then in January, we will vote as a commission on the new formula, so stay tuned for that.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, Susan?
I have no reports.
Okay. Dennis?
Nothing to report this evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The other three, Public Safety, Public Works and Communications Recreation Coordinator reports are all in the packet. I think we can read those and one from there. Motion to adjourn? To the workstation?
Second.
Roll call.
Teresa Harms? Mike Jones?
Yes.
Mike LaFredo?
Yes.
Joseph Jones?
Yes.
Susan Skiris?
Yes.